Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley, Christensen, Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or the final call, public invited to be heard, on any item at the end of the meeting. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
No, Mayor Coombs, there are none.
Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
Okay, I guess we'll start with first call, public invited to be heard. A.J. Herron. So, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My name is A.J. Herron. The address is P.O. Box 414, Longmont, Colorado. With your approval, I'd like to read from the President's proclamation that was made today regarding their situation in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and the request of flags to be lowered until sunset on the 25th of July. At that time, the President said, "Our thoughts and prayers as a nation are with the service members killed last week in Chattanooga. We honor their service. We offer our gratitude to the police officers and first responders who stalked the rampage and saved lives. We draw strength from yet another American community that has come together with an unmistakable message to those who would try to do us harm. We do not live in fear. You cannot divide us, and you will not change our way of life." Mr. Mayor, the reason why I read this is, last Thursday, when the situation took place in Chattanooga, I, as well as yourself, and I'm sure the council members, were stunned. But at the same time, I thought, what had it been Longmont? What had it been Longmont for our National Guard, for the recruiting systems that are here? So, the reason why I have asked to speak to council and to you, Mr. Mayor, this evening, is to ask you to please meet with council and to consider meeting with the safety and security forces of Longmont to reassess our readiness posture, had it been Longmont. Looking at the logistics of that center and looking at the logistics of the recruitment centers, as well as a reverse phone solution that would notify those centers in the event of an emergency. I would like you to also consider cyber. Being in high-tech, it's very present. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ma'wena Aric.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I'm an immigrant from Africa. On a serious note. And I had a long journey to get here. I love my newfound country. I'm working on it. I've seriously been working on it. When the school, when the college. Fail, succeed. And this is the American way. I did not come here to fail. I've come here to succeed. And so, the point is, somebody has to lift you up at some point. When necessary. I'm crying. I'm not here to panhandle or something like that, no. I just want to work. And do my part. Love my people. Never discriminate. I don't believe in color. Black, white, yellow, green, no. I'm colorblind. For sure. I speak three languages. I got there, that's a different story. I'm good with people. Every day, on a daily basis, I walk. Every day.
Well, thank you for coming here tonight. I'm sorry that you only get three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm thank you. Thank you.
All right, there's no more people on the public invited to be heard list.
Mayor Coombs, there's no second reading or public hearing. No second reading ordinance is a public hearing, so the first item is your consent agenda. We have one item. It's to approve a motion finding that the outside water tap service agreement for the Gorley property will benefit the city and direct staff to process the application request.
Captain Mender, Levinson.
I actually just, since staff is here tonight, I just had one question about the further development of the property and because there was a word like "may" in there, so I didn't understand what we could look forward to in the future.
Mayor, councilmember Levinson, Ken Hughes in Water Resources, manager of Public Works after Resources Department. The current property is owned commercial in Boulder County. It has an operating stone countertop business on it. How the applicant first came to the city is he was considering enlarging the buildings so he could do a little more countertop business. Went to do that, he has to get a permit, you know, permit through Boulder County. He did that. One of the requirements was to have the local water provider give a statement that they provide water. Since this particular tap couldn't, didn't have an agreement, it's a very old tap, been there for a long time, couldn't, we couldn't do that without going through this process. Subsequent to that original request, though, the applicant decided to withdraw his application. Boulder County is no longer pursuing additional enlargement of this building. Again, if we, if council finds a benefit for this particular tap and we process it, what we will then do is actually enter into a formal agreement. And in our outside water tap agreements, we'll put language that, you know, limits the outside water tap, which is what we do with all outside water tap agreements, to the current existing use location. In this case, it'd be a commercial use. So, the applicant would actually have to then come back to both Boulder County and the city if they wanted to expand upon that business. It's a fairly small lot, right, kind of in, I'll call it the downtown hygienist, because that's not stretching it. And so, there's really not a lot of opportunity to expand it, but by having this agreement, we'd actually have the opportunity to have them come back and talk to council about that in the future.
I guess my question really was that on the bottom of the page four of our packet, it says the applicant will not be permitted to use the water for any other property dwelling business or residence, and that we would put that limit on that you mentioned, will not be developed beyond the existing use. And then, down under the next page, where you have your recommendations and the pros and cons, what I was really trying to get at is, under cons, the second bullet point that says reclassification of the service may allow for, may allow for an enlargement of the current use. So, it may not be this applicant, but that's why, I guess I was a little confused because in the first, you know, above the recommendations you talked about, there would be a limit, but then the cons, under your recommendation section, said that may allow for an enlargement of the current use. So, could he expand his business? Is that what that means?
Okay. It, that may have, that was my wording, so I probably didn't word it quite precisely enough. The, what we're trying to say is, any, any business or any cap that's formalized then gives the cap holder the right to use water under the conditions of that agreement. So, in the future, somebody could enlarge upon that use, but right in the agreement, it will say they have to come back to city council before they can enlarge it. So, although it's always easier to come and say, I want to enlarge my existing than I want a grand new one to enlarge.
I guess I was channeling my inner Brian Bagley, because, you know, if you have that word "may," sometimes it's not, it looks like conditional, so, thank you. That was my only question.
Super, thank you.
Councilmember, opinion.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of the consent agenda.
I'll sec, okay. Since it moved to seconded, let's vote. Okay, that passes five to zero with councilmember Bagley and councilmember Christensen absent. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is General Business 11A, update on Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, Blood Recovery Funding and Activities, and Kathy Fedler will make this presentation.
So, if you could bring it up when I talk about Copper Peak. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler. I'm the Housing and Community Investment Manager for the city, and Harold had requested that I come and talk to you a little bit and bring you up to date on what my division has been doing around the CDBG Dr. flood recovery efforts. And as I indicated in the communication, there is four different areas that we've been involved in, and since then, I've thought of another one, so there's actually and since then, I've thought of another one, so there's actually five. So we have been working to administer a $2.75 million grant for home repair and replacement, down payment assistance and temporary rent assistance, so direct housing assistance for people who were impacted by the flood. That funding came from round one, funding that the state received. And then we are preparing to administer an additional $2.75 million when we get the round two suballocation. The second thing we've been working on is supporting new construction of affordable housing using CDBG Dr. funding. The third is participating in the Boulder County Collaborative, working on receiving and administering the suballocation from the state. Fourth is applying for the National Disaster Resilience Competition, which is a very large grant program that we hope to be able to access in partnership with the state. And then the fifth one is that we did receive and will be managing a planning grant and a funded position to help us implement the suballocation, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So on the housing assistance programs, again, we received an award of $2 million for repair and replacement of homes that were damaged by the flood, $500,000 for temporary rental assistance for folks who were impacted, and $250,000 for down payment assistance. And the down payment assistance program, we are operating and managing countywide. The other two are just Longmont. Altogether, I gave you information in the, in the communication, but just to kind of summarize, we have processed to date 109 total applications for assistance. About 83 have been found eligible so far, so that's about 76% of all applicants. Forty-six have been, households have been fully assisted, or they're in the approved and in process state, so that's 55% of those that were found eligible. And then 27 applicants withdrew or were found ineligible, which is about 25% of the total applicants. We do have about 15 in process that aren't reflected, other than in the 109. The funding that we did receive, we had done an amendment, and actually last week, we brought those amendments to you, because what we found was that there wasn't the need for temporary rental assistance that we thought we would, we would see. And so we took some of those funds that we realized we weren't going to be spending and put them back up into the categories of the home repair and replacement and the down payment assistance, where we were seeing a lot of needs. And under the Home Repair and Replacement Assistance Program, we've actually spent to date, or have committed, about $2.6 million, which is over the $2.2 million that we received in, once we did the amendment. So we're about $300,000 into the round two funding, and we are allowed to commit funds in advance and reimburse ourselves. So we'll be getting about $1.75 million for home repair and replacement when the round two funds kick in as part of the suballocation. We spent to date, or committed $300,000 in the down payment assistance program, and in round two, we'll be getting about $1 million. And then, as I had mentioned before, the temporary rent assistance, and I'll get to a little bit later, Boulder County is going to operate that countywide, since they're still seeing some need for that, and we aren't, so they will be referring our folks to them. We have been doing a lot of outreach to folks, the direct housing assistance folks, with multiple mailings to the addresses of the homes that were determined to be flood damaged using FEMA data, city inspections from way back after the flood first happened, and some early neighborhood outreach. We've had the community service youth folks hand deliver information. We're placing signs in the yards of the folks that were actually doing the repair, the replacement of the homes, and we have been attending neighborhood meetings. So we have, have and will continue to do outreach to make sure we get to folks. And we just encountered a new area today. We got an applicant from the Park Manor Apartments that were right across from the Royal Mobile Home Park. And we are visiting the Royal Mobile Home Park folks again. So some of them still had an unmet need, and so they qualified for additional assistance above and beyond what we had given them when we initially went in and did our optional relocation program. So some of those folks that still have a need were able to go back and assist as well. In housing new construction funding, the state, through round one and round two, funds, set aside money for direct new construction rental housing, and some for homeownership housing to Habitat. We have been pretty successful in receiving funding, the city has, not just the city, but the city, the bigger city. In round one, the Spring Creek Apartments project was funded, which is the Longmont Housing Development Corporation. They received $3.9 million in CDBG Dr. funding to build 60 units of senior housing, and those will all be affordable at or below 40% of the area median income. They have broken ground, or will be soon breaking ground, and are going to do a cement pour as their celebration. So I'm sure you'll be getting some invitations soon on that. Occupancy is estimated in mid-2016. And we have no additional city funding in that project, other than what they may get in fee waivers, which are estimated at 100, just under $150,000, and they would be eligible for fee offsets, which is where we pay for some of the fees from the Affordable Housing Fund. The Centennial Park Apartments is a group from Missoula, Montana, that will be submitting plans to build 140 units of family housing at Mountain View and Pace area. They are eligible to receive $4 million in CDBG Dr. funding from the state. Forty-five units will be affordable at 40% AMI and 38 units at 50% AMI, so a total of 83 that will be at or below 50% AMI for about 59% of the total units to be provided. The estimated fee waivers that the city would be contributing for that project would be about $312,000, and occupancy is estimated for early 2017. The Christman Apartments, to be built by MGL Partnership from Denver, will be submitting plans to build 114 units of family housing at the 23rd and Christman area, so just rest of the Sonic, behind the Sonic on North Main. They were awarded $3.7 million in CDBG Dr. funding. 10 units will be affordable at 30% AMI, 46 at 40% AMI, and 24 units at 50% AMI, so 80 total at or below 50% AMI for 70% of the total units in that particular development. Occupancy is estimated for June of 2017. This project is a little bit different in that, once it's constructed and occupied, the project will be turned over to the Longmont Housing Authority for permanent ownership and management, so it will stay as a local, ongoing management and ownership. Estimated fee waivers for this project are about $240,000. And then the Copper Peak Apartments, again, the inland group from Spokane, Washington, will be submitting plans to build 240 units of family housing north of the Walmart on 287. They're receiving $500,000 in CDBG Dr. funding, and are in the process, I'm sorry, with 28 units affordable at 50% AMI, so about 11.6% of their total units. The occupancy is estimated, again, at June 2017. So if all of these move forward, it will be a total investment in Longmont, or a total infusion of outside funding in Longmont of $12.1 million from the CDBG Dr. funding, in addition to tax credits and private activity bonds and private financing, which would probably be in the realm of about $20 million per project. And we will receive about 254 affordable rental homes that meet the city's affordability standards. Habitat for Humanity also received $4 million, the Colorado affiliate, to pass down to its local affiliates from round one funding, DR funding. To date, St. Brain Habitat has received about $588,000 and have built, completed two homes for flood-affected families and have four more underwear planned in Longmont. They also have completed one home in Lyons for a family who lost their home, and they hope to be able to build another six to eight homes in Lyons with the help of some of this funding. They also, over the past 18 months, have completed about 21 critical repairs to homes in Longmont, Lyons, and Frederick, helping families to return to their homes. Now, on the Boulder County Collaborative and Suballocation.
Kathy, before you go on, I was trying to actually find the email. Can you talk about how we're spending the dollars down and actually putting them to work versus what we're seeing in some of the other reports? You sent me the email.
I did, and off the top of my head, I would say, so the state does do, as each community draws down funds, so gets reimbursement for the funds that we have spent on the housing assistance programs in particular. The city of Longmont, Boulder County, Larimer County, Estes Park, Greeley, I think are the main ones in, I said Boulder County, that have been spending funds and drawing them down. So the last one that I can remember, I think over 50% of the funding that's been drawn down to date has been Longmont spending the funding, and of the funds projected, again, most of it has been Longmont. Now, the other communities are starting to pick up, and part of the reason we jumped ahead was because of the work we did at Royal, that we were able to get reimbursement for. But we have been really aggressive in getting the programs underway, policies and programs set up, out the door, applicants in, processed, et cetera, so that we could move fast. So we have been, we've been doing, I guess, a really good job.
Yeah, and I kind of put her on the spot with this. I just couldn't find the email to talk about it, but I do want to commend the staff and the work that they've been doing in terms of utilization of the dollars. When you see that 50% of the total dollars spent in the state is actually the work that they've been doing and that they continue to do, I think it's just a really testament, it's a really good testament to the folks working in our organization and bringing those dollars to bear where they're having a positive impact in, in a quick pace, even though it seems a long time ago. But moving through these programs is just, it's just a testament to the great work that's being done by Kathy and her staff and everyone that's touching this, so I just wanted to point that out.
Well, and I think the fact, too, that we were foresighted enough to bring in consultants to help with that really gave us a jump ahead, too, because the other communities haven't done that as much, and they're trying to figure this out on their own, and you really, you really can't. So I thank you for allowing us to move ahead and do that kind of on a if-come basis, so. On the collaborative and the suballocation, I know you all are aware that since the very first day of the flood, we have been trying to receive a direct allocation of CDBG Dr. funding from HUD. As you all know, that was unsuccessful, so then we started lobbying the state, and we were successful in getting them in round two and round three to set aside funds for the three most impacted counties, that if we formed a collaborative and were able to meet certain requirements that the state put on, that we could get a direct allocation. So they will treat us like a subgrantee, which allows us to make local decisions about what to fund, how to fund things, and we just report back to the state then. So as part of the round two funding, we will receive about $45 million immediately to the collaborative, with Longmont serving as the fiscal and management agent for the grant. The funds are, will be divided with $35.4 million for infrastructure projects and $9.6 million for housing assistance programs. So the state took only funding from housing and infrastructure to put into the suballocation. So the economic development funding, agricultural funding, et cetera, they did not pull funds out for the suballocation. And it occurred to me, as I was pulling, after I pulled this together, that I've probably never gone through with you exactly how the collaborative has worked and what we have gotten to, to date, as far as how we're setting up the collaborative and the suballocation and where funds are going to go. So that's what I would like to do now. So, do I just click? Where do I go? The other one? There we go. So I think you all know who the Boulder County Collaborative is, but the audience may not. So we came together right after the flood happened, actually, and just started working together, not so much as part of the collaborative, per se, for the suballocation, but just trying to pull together, help the smaller communities, and kind of learn from each other and just help each other. So the main entities that fell out, I guess, or had the most damage were Boulder County Government, the city of Boulder, Jamestown, Lafayette, Longmont, Lewisville, Lyons, Nederland, and then some of the special districts in Boulder County, which I think were down to about six, maybe, that still have unmet needs. First of all, we prepared an unmet needs assessment, and as you know, Longmont went ahead and did one at the very beginning, but then we expanded it and included all of Boulder County, so that we would be eligible for the suballocation. So we did a comprehensive assessment of all of the unmet needs in the community, Boulder County-wide, and not just infrastructure and housing, but economic development, lost revenue, planning needs, et cetera, using very detailed information that we got from FEMA and SBA and some of the other, other entities that were here. So this is kind of hard to read, but it does outline the, what the unmet needs assessment showed, and the bottom line is the one to look at, which is just under $928 million of unmet need in Boulder County in the different areas that we looked at. So this is all of the damages, less money that's come in so far, and then for any project that we might do that's connected to the flood or enhances resiliency, et cetera, this is the gap that the communities are facing. The state, as I said before, in the area of household assistance, home access and infrastructure for round two, applied the percentage of damages that Boulder County had, which was about 52% of the household damages and 47% of the infrastructure damages in the state of the flood event, and applied those to the funding that they set aside in those same categories. And that's how we got to the funding of about $44.6 million for Boulder County. And a million dollars, we did a swap for the home access program with Larimer County. They couldn't spend their money, we could. We moved it into, or did a swap of round one, they gave us their round one money, we're giving them it back in round two, so that's why a million's coming out. So $43.6 million is what we're looking at in the suballocation. So Boulder County Collaborative is looking at, based on unmet needs of housing and infrastructure, about 78% of the unmet needs are in the area of infrastructure projects, and 22% are in the area of housing. So we were allowed, one of the good points of the suballocation is even though the state, what they took and put into the suballocation, they put in $12 million from housing and less in infrastructure, but because we had our unmet needs assessment that showed we had more infrastructure damage than housing damage, not that we didn't have a low amount of housing damage, but using those percentages, we could then adapt the suballocation and spend that money in the areas where we needed it most. So we put 78% of the funding into infrastructure and 22% into housing, so $9.6 million for housing. And then they did add round one money that they recaptured of $1.4 million, so we'll actually have $35 million for infrastructure projects and $9.6 million for housing projects. We are still trying to get additional funding from wherever we can, and we talk to them all the time about this, so. In the infrastructure area, that $35 million, the first thing that we're going to do, that we agreed to do, was that each community and the special districts as a whole will get $250,000 to use for a priority infrastructure project or their federal funding match. This is a way that we can get funding out to each community quickly for projects that are either already done, that we'll be reimbursing them, or they're absolutely ready to go, and we can get them going quickly. So that is a total of about $2.25 of the $35 million. The rest of the funding will go to infrastructure projects that will be more closely monitored, probably a mini-application process, because we do, on all of these funds, 50% have to benefit low moderate income persons, which means a good portion of the infrastructure projects are going to have to benefit low moderate income persons as well, because we only have $9.6 million going to housing. So every project will be vetted for meeting one of the national objectives, to make sure it's an eligible activity, that it meets all the other DR criteria, using Davis Bacon, it's bid properly, it's procured properly, et cetera. in, it's bid properly, it's procured properly, et cetera. So, we will be working through about 33.2 million in priority infrastructure projects. And we've already started researching the projects, getting environmentals going, and getting those kind of lined up, so as soon as we get the money, we're ready to move. We'll also be funding buyout program through here. This is mostly in the unincorporated areas of the county, as well as Jamestown and Lyons. There are a lot of properties that the homes were damaged, either outside the floodplain or inside the floodplain. If they're outside the floodplain, they're in danger because flood, mudslides, or the mountain could come down on them with another rain. They're just not in good shape, they're not livable. And, more importantly, the communities do not want liability of having people move back in and fix up those properties. So, going in and buying those folks out, so they can move on, and then keeping the property as either open space or recreational space, so that nobody else can go in there and go into an unsafe area, is what this would be looking like.
The question is, they acquired at the correct fair market value. Is that the fair market value after the flood, or before the flood?
Well, we, so, since this slide was done, we've had some discussions with the state and with HUD as well. And what is going to happen before, with the requirements, you had to do it at post-flood value if you were doing a buyout, and that wasn't going to get people out of their homes. They need their full, you know, value of their home. So, we did talk with HUD, and actually HUD's going to do a waiver and allow mudslides and other criteria, engineering requirements, et cetera, so that we can go in and do pre-flood value with this program. So, it's going to take a waiver from HUD, but they're going to give it to us, so we were able to talk them into that. So, we'll be offering pre-flood value, so that people are made whole and can move on. So, again, this just reiterates how the funding will be spent, with the minimum threshold projects and the priority projects at 35.4 million. This column tells you what we're asking, as soon as the funding becomes available, for the state to obligate, so set aside in the agreement, so we can move quickly on that. You don't want to obligate all the funds if you don't think you're going to spend it immediately, because it starts the two-year time clock ticking, when you have to have it spent. So, that's why we're only asking for part of the spending, 20 million of it, to be obligated In the areas of housing, again, I won't go through this too in-depth, but we're setting aside funds for temporary rental assistance, the county will operate, for down payment assistance, that the city will operate, for continuation of both the county and the city's rehab and replacement program, clearance and demolition, in case we run across any unsound structures that need to be torn down in any of the communities, we're setting aside a little bit of that. The home access, so we've had homes that were perfectly fine, but the roads and bridges to get to them were damaged. So, this is a program that will help replace and repair roads, bridges, culverts, et cetera, so that people can get back into their homes that are okay. And then this just reiterates, again, the funding that's being set aside of the 9.6 million for housing programs, and we're going to obligate about 3.7 million immediately from this category. We will have the ability to go back and adjust, just like the state does, it's an amendment to the program, but we'll be able to do that, we'll keep an eye on that. And then under administration, as you know, the city's agreed to be the lead agency for the collaborative. We'll have already entered into an intergovernmental agreement for the general program. We'll be entering into additional, project-specific agreements as we appropriate those funds and move forward. We are asking for up to 3%, which is what the state allows, in addition to our sub-allocation for general administration. So, that will be up to about 1.3 million. We're still working with the state on that, the actual dollar amount, but they have added 712,500 to this grant agreement. So, we did turn in our action plan in the month of April, after holding a number of public hearings and comment, a 30-day comment period. The unmet needs assessment was included that, and everything went to the state on May 1st. The state prepared and published what's called the Third Substantial Amendment on July 2nd, which includes the sub-allocation, where they're taking the funds from, and a couple other minor housekeeping things. The Third Substantial Amendment actually is only 10 pages, as opposed to the 100-some that previous amendments had been. Comments are being taken until July 31st on the Third Substantial Amendment, and then they, the state expects to formally submit it to HUD the week of August 7th. HUD has up to 45 days, I think, to review. We think it'll be a really quick review, because they've actually seen our action plan, because we sent it to them as well, back when we sent it to the state, and the substantial amendment is really pretty short. So, that, let's see, what else did I have around the collaborative? You know, we've just been meeting ever since early 2014, quite often. We've taken little breaks, but kind of meeting is needed. Everyone has been really participatory. Every community sends a representative, at least one, if not more. We're moving into figuring out how this whole management and administration activity is going to work, what the smaller communities need from us, do they need us to go in and really run their projects from start to finish? Do they have any capacity at all, et cetera? So, we're kind of working through that right now. I did want to bring to your attention, this wasn't in the communication, it's kind of additional information, but we, I just went through, and we've been trying to keep track of budget and expenditures, et cetera. We have about 464,000 of unreimbursed expenses for grant preparation, sub-allocation work, et cetera, right now. We have approved expenses, we have approved a grant. All right, I'm going to have to pull out my glasses, should read my writing.
Well, Kathy's going through this, one of the things I wanted to point out is while she is, this is a really neat package that she's presented and talked about, this is really the culmination of hundreds of hours of time that they have spent on it, that numerous staff has spent on it. I can't think of how many times we've made trips to Denver to have these conversations. And so, again, really great product, but it was an interesting process of getting to this product, and where we sit today with a lot of time by a lot of folks.
Speaking of process, I remember when you first showed me the flowcharts of what all the jumps you had to go through, I mean, it was like a big spaghetti flowchart with jump loops, and I don't know how anybody could even understand how to go through that process, let alone perform it like this, it's amazing.
That's why they did, I mean...
I think Kathy should be administering the management of the building of the VA hospital.
No, thank you. Fast job. And we've managed to keep a pretty good relationship with the state, too, surprisingly.
I mean, well, there may have been stories of difficult conversations, there were difficult conversations. I think there were points where every one of us, including myself, we were having very stern conversations. But, at the end of the day, we still have a really good relationship, and everyone's working together. And I think that's really positive, it's a really, it's a great thing for our state, it's a great thing for our communities and our counties, in the sense that we were able to really defend our communities aggressively, argue for positions, but there wasn't anything personal about it, and we moved through it. So, while there may have been, it looked like we were really fighting each other, at the end, we're really working well with each other, not only locally, but with our counterparts at the state.
I did have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead, Bonnie.
Because we are the lead agency for the collaborative, are we collecting any sort of administration fee?
No, just from the, what we are asking from the state. We do, every community is allowed project delivery costs, so we will be getting that out of the actual grant. So, that's direct project administration costs, but the general administration to operate the collaborative, and our fiscal, and our accounting people and everything, we are requesting that funding from the state in addition to the, right, in addition to the All right, so, we have about $464,000 of unreimbursed expenses for the different grant preparation, sub-allocation work, et cetera. We have an approved grant for the preparation of the unmet needs assessment, which will reimburse the $72,000 as soon as we get the agreement from the state. About $278,000 should be covered by the general administration from the sub-allocation contract, and then another $83,000 covered by project delivery costs from grants, from the grant, leaving about $30,000 that I think will probably have to be covered from CDVG, or the Affordable Housing Fund, or General Fund, depending on where that's coming from, et cetera. So, that's pretty good so far.
Out of the 464, we only have a $30,000 gap.
Right, so, and I'm working to get that down, so we'll see how that goes. So, then, on the National Disaster Resiliency Competition, the state of Colorado submitted an application to participate in this national competition, which is only open to the 2011 to 2013 disaster funding communities. So, we're competing against the Sandy communities, and some of the southern communities, and some of the wildfires, et cetera. But, up to 500 million might be approved per application, with 1 billion available nationwide. So, hopefully, they don't fund just two projects, but I think they're going to look a little further. We did partner with the state in submitting the Phase 1 part of the application, and were insured, and insured that the St. Brain Creek Replacement Improvement Project was included in that application. So, it is eligible to move into Phase 2. We're now working with the state to, on that. It has to be completed and submitted by October 27th, so a really, really tight timeframe. The entire collaborative is part of that application, and we're really looking not just at capital improvement projects, which HUD does want to see as part of the competition, but also resilience efforts, especially around the community and the neighborhoods in the community. So, how can we make our community more resilient? So, we're looking at some of the criteria that I outlined below, and really did a lot of brainstorming last Friday, and I think we've got some really good ideas about how to pull in the Boulder County Climate Change Plan that they did, some of the COOP plans that we all have, mitigation efforts, et cetera. And then, the next item I'm going to talk about, resiliency standards, but anyway, pulling all that together, we're going to go out to the public somehow. Next Monday, we're going to talk to the state again about how all this is going to be pulled together, and what do we want from the public? So, we're not asking them to comment on things they've already commented on, or they've already seen, because a lot of the projects have already gone through very significant public outreach and input. But, trying to be much more specific and directive about what do we want the state, the public to inform us about. So, we will be working on that through the rest of the next couple months, the summer. As I mentioned in the communication, the bulk of this will be completed under, by the Public Works and Natural Resources Department, who's more attuned with the capital projects anyway. Will providing assistance as needed, pulling in other folks if we need to do facilitation, or some of the resiliency efforts, et cetera. But, the collaborative is going to be the lead agency, they call it, for the application, and we're pulling in Boko Strong and some of the other efforts that are going on. So, we're really trying to build on what we've already have done. All right, then finally, the area that I had forgotten to put in the communication, was that we applied for and received, on behalf of the collaborative, a $125,000 grant to hire a consultant to prepare the required resiliency performance standards plan, to set standards for resilient infrastructure projects that make sense for Boulder County communities, and that meet HUD requirements. And literally, this is a paragraph in the second allocation, Federal Register, that just says, "Communities have to do this." It gives you absolutely no idea what they want to see, what it means, what is a performance standard around resiliency, et cetera, so we're kind of making this up. But, we have to do it in order to award funding for infrastructure projects. So, hopefully, we'll have a plan that gets pulled together very quickly. We'll provide strategic guidance, objectives, performance measures, and resource requirements as we move through our infrastructure projects with the sub-allocation funding. We also received funding to hire a planner for 18 months to help us apply those performance standards when they're ready, to projects, analyze and make recommendations on any changes needed to projects that are economically feasible, and oversee the implementation throughout the collaborative, throughout all of the collaboratives, so it'd be a person working throughout the community. We do hope to coordinate with existing plans, including the state's resiliency framework, the COOP plans that a lot of communities have, the comp plans that most communities have, building codes, et cetera, as we prepare that. But, that is another effort that's ongoing right now as well. So, I think that is everything, maybe, who knows? So, answer, any other questions?
I did have one question about, you know, some of the people where their bridges to their houses were washed out, what about the people that built bridges that weren't built to any, even the Boulder County standards, that were, are they getting their bridges then replaced at new standards, or what's happening to those people?
Well, so, if it is impacting their ability to get to their property, then yes, they will be repaired or replaced to appropriate standards, right?
Okay, even if the first bridge wasn't built to any standards?
Right, right, because we want it resilient, we want it to, people to have access to their homes, and be able to withstand, hopefully, not another one, but who knows?
Councilwoman Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, because you asked the question I was going to ask, because there's several, right now, currently, I can think of several foot bridges that go across the river, that before, there were car, vehicular bridges that either were done years and years ago, but now, you know, these people are taking their groceries across the, this little foot bridge, and if the water's high enough, it sometimes goes over it. So, I'm glad to hear that they'll be able to at least repair, or have repaired those bridges. As Harold said, this is a, you know, reading this and then actually getting the presentation, seeing the slides, you know, I always tell residents, so, we're done with the flood, right? No, we're not done with the flood. We have folks, folks like yourself, and others, and Public Works, Natural Resources, and throughout the organization, from the day the flood occurred, and are still going to this date currently, and will be dealing with this for several years down the line. So, thank you, first off. The only other question, the only other question I had, and it's not related to CDVG Dr., is the, how is the microloan program going? Just a quick information for me?
We have not made any loans yet out of there. We do have two to three people that I think are going to be eligible and work through the process. One was somebody who we already replaced their mobile home, they had to take out a loan from the dealer to, for their duplication of benefits. And so, we're trying to get her to refinance into this, which would be a much better interest rate for her. So, we're working through it, but yeah, we have not made any yet, so.
Okay, well, it's glad that we had one of the local banks help us out, and hopefully, we'll get some folks in that, but thank you for all the hard, the continued hard work, so, thanks.
Well, I think I can speak for the entire council, you've done a tremendous job. I'm just totally amazed, how you can do all the things you do, Kathy, well, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mayor, your next item is Human Resources and Accounting Technology Solution, that's Katz, update from Senator Cedar, our Assistant City Manager.
I will find the right one. Okay, that's too far. All right. Mayor, City Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the HATS overview, Phase One, the Human Resources and Accounting Technology Solution. So this is the overhaul of our financial system. So you've been hearing about this, certainly during the budget process, and sometimes when we say, "Well, it doesn't really do that now." So we just successfully implemented Phase One, which went live on July 1st. And so I just wanted to give the council a quick update and talk a little bit about why we were doing all this in the first place. So our old financial system is almost 30 years old and still uses green screens and things like that, lots of manual processes to make sure that it continues to work and provide some accuracy in accounting. And so the desired results from the new project included things like improving reporting. Right now, city staff has to have accounting run reports for them that then they're able to take a look at, and this will have a lot of self-sufficiency, a lot of self-reporting options. Improve the ease of use, as I said, lots of manual processes in the old system. And this is a completely and fully integrated financial system, so all, everything connects to each other, which is sort of hard to get used to all of a sudden, not a good thing. Improve system flexibility, because you can slice and dice data in lots of different ways, and it's accurate every time. Expand the self-service capabilities, which I just mentioned a little bit. Improve the business process efficiencies. This includes lots of automated processes. So HATS has all sorts of things where it automatically generates PO requisitions to vendors, for example. Will automatically generate notifications to approvers to approve things that are in their queues, et cetera. Reduce data redundancy. What we found was that people would take information out of the old system and then slice and dice it in their own systems and try to then rectify their shadow system and our system, and just led to an awful lot of inefficient use of time. And so by having one system that does it for you, that will be able to hopefully increase some efficiencies all the way across the organization. Automate manual processes, we just talked about. Provide accurate and timely information. Currently, one of the problems with our financial, our old financial system is that it doesn't hold encumbrances accurately. The new system does, which is sometimes throwing this, throwing folks off in the implementation because all of a sudden it's budget checking, which is a good thing. But essentially, that the automating the manual processes and the accurate and timely information is really important. In the old system, if you were to swipe and use your P-card, some of you all know this, it would take up to three months for that to actually post in the system, in the general ledger. Under this system, as soon as it's approved, it posts. So the information is much more timely, you're able to make much better decisions, and the detail is much greater in what you can see on things like P-card purchases. It does serve all areas of the city and reduces those shadow systems. So the HATS timeline, three phases of HATS go live, and I want to be clear, because I use HATS and Munis kind of interchangeably. HATS is the name of the project. The entire phased project is HATS. Munis is the name of the system we actually chose, and Tyler is the vendor who provides that software. So you hear people talk about HATS and Munis and Tyler, it's pretty much the same thing, but just to be clear, HATS is the project, Tyler is the vendor, Munis is the actual software. So Phase One, which was financials, went live July 1st. We trained end-users in May and June. We had over 400 end-users that came up and up to the HATS room upstairs of this room and to the ETS training room, and most of them trained in three or four different classes. So 400 people training up to four times. Our winners were those in recreation who had up to eight classes and some of our public works managers who had up to eight classes out of nine possible. They got an eight out of nine score. Phase Two, HR payroll begins this year, and this will affect everybody. So right now, financials really affects people who deal with financials, have P-cards or do purchase requisitions mostly. But Phase Two affects every single person, because we changed the entire payroll system. We automate many of the HR processes, which I know drive Harold crazy, onto the paper processes for Triplicate and things like that. I think Joanne also agrees. And then Phase Three is kind of the cleanup, so accounts receivable and cashiering, that's all in 2017. So the big changes that happened in Phase One, number one, we have a complete new chart of accounts. Every account number changed as part of implementation in Phase One. Exactly. The idea is because we have so many different kinds of small reorganizations, large reorganizations, each of the numbers in the new accounting system stands for something different. And so it's able to hopefully move some of those accounts easier, you know, when the organization needs it. Budget checking, believe it or not, the old system didn't check for your budget, and the new system does. So you cannot exceed your budget, not on a line-on basis, not that restrictive, but on like a roll-up code. So I'll admit, I'm the first one that threw the insufficient budget card for the council budget, because I had inadvertently charged the Cable Trust Fund contract to council budget instead of to a non-departmental budget, which threw your budget over. So once we got that fixed, I realized just how many things there probably are that have gone unnoticed in the old system, that I really appreciate the cleanup that HATS is bringing with it. The encumbrances are held accurately, as I mentioned before. Once you open a purchase order for a certain amount, it holds the entire amount until either the PO is closed or that year has flipped around. The requisition is required before you make a purchase. This is a tough one for folks. People just go on, buy things, and then go ahead and go through the purchasing process. This way, they must go through the purchasing process first. Requisitions are created at the end-user level, and then those purchase orders are sent to the vendors electronically. So it's a completely paperless system now on the purchase order side, which is awesome. The vendors are getting used to that, too. We sent out a sample so that they could see, and they all called saying, "Hey, I got a PO for Office Depot," because that was the example we used. So we're all going to get used to it. And then one of the biggest things is requisition entry and approval changes. In the old system, anybody could start a requisition, anybody could approve the requisition. In the new system, you can only do one role. You can't approve your own POs. You have to either be a person who puts in the requisition or somebody who approves the requisition. Requisition approvers in our operation, our division managers are higher. And so this is another pretty big change that I think ensures a whole new level of accuracy and efficiency. So I know this is nice and large, so you can see it, but essentially, this is the new workflow. Requisitioners put in a requisition for PO, PO approvers approve those. If it's over $100,000, it goes to the director level. Then it goes through purchasing to be able to make sure that it's followed the purchasing code, and it automatically goes to the vendor. It's just like a four-step process to get things ordered. After the goods or services are received, people on any level, whether you're a supervisor or a requisitioner, anybody can receive those goods, say, "Yep, we got them, we got what we meant to get." That information goes to accounting, and then those checks are mailed out to the vendors. We're still having some transitional issues, and we still have a little bit of paper going back and forth, but eventually, once we get through the transition, it will be a paperless process.
So a question, when you buy like a hard capital asset, like a piece of equipment, and it comes in, do you put a barcode on it so you can track that asset and depreciate it, and like when it gets disposed of, you know which asset it was and all that? How do you handle all your assets? I mean, you just have hundreds of computers and screens and stuff.
Thousands.
Thousands, yeah, thousands, hundreds of thousands. I mean, what else, 700 pieces of equipment at the pump house, and you just have 10 times that. So I just wonder how you guys do it.
Mayor, members of council, fixed assets is also part of this Phase One, but there are different ways of doing it. The warehouse does have a barcoding system. Fleet does it based on a vehicle number. Many of the computers, monitors, all those things have a little tag on it that says this is city property with a tag that goes along with our HelpStar system. So there's lots of ways that we capitalize those items. And our accounting folks are taking a look at some of the dollar thresholds that go along with those in order to provide those depreciated numbers. It's going to get better and better, though, I believe. So with all that being said, that's what we have accomplished in Phase One. People are adjusting. I think people are being very, very patient with the new financial system. Today, this is what, the 21st, we have about almost 400 help tickets, 380 some help tickets that are in with people that either had access issues, or we've had some conversion issues of POs when they came through, and we're just working through those one at a time. Today, or yesterday, actually, we ended up having only about 100 of those left open, and our staff is working on them to try to make sure that they're resolved and vendors are paid well. It is a transition for people, and what I've really found is that people want to learn the new system. They recognize that it makes the most sense for the organization, and they're heading that way. So my hope is that once we get through conversion and everybody gets to the point where they're more comfortable, we can really see some of the increased reporting and other benefits that Phase One will give us, for sure. One of the things that I want to talk about, though, is all the people that have been part of the HATS committee. So I'm going to show you three screens and then kind of go backwards. So we've got all these people that were on the project team, the executive committee team, and the selection team. We have lots of people that have donated their time, not donated, in many cases, it's been pulled out of them on late nights and weekends and things like that to implement this system. This one, this screen, I really want to talk about for just a second, because our two project managers, Teresa and Liz, finally took a weekend off last weekend, the first time, I think, in two years of implementing this system. And I really want to just mention that at the same time as we were implementing HATS, was the same time that we had the flood, we were trying to deal with a lot of the FEMA pieces. Molly Castilecki, who was originally project manager, ended up moving into FEMA reimbursement, because that was equally, of equal importance, if not greater importance at the time to the city. Danielle Hens, our purchasing manager, moved on to Seattle, and so we hired a new purchasing manager to come in and be a lead, Diana Wilson. And Diana, of course, was working for purchasing contracts at the time, because she was doing procurement for broadband. So I just wanted to mention that there were so many things that have been happening, and this team just pulled it together like nothing I've ever seen with just incredible accuracy for the, for the go-live to go as well as it did. And even the Tyler project folks said this was the best go-live that they had ever seen. And so for these folks to be working this hard on this project, as they were working on flood recovery, as they were working on broadband, as we were working on flood projects, I just think is a huge testament to their, just sheer grit, just sheer grit. In fact, Liz DeCatt is from Lyons and was unable to get to her home for a good chunk of that first part of the process, project, because of some of the things that happened with the flood. So that being said, this is the project team. I entered a little later. I'm the change management team lead in this project, as Tammy Ballady left and decided to be a rancher, kind of went through this. And this is our executive steering committee. You'll notice that the utilities are represented on here, have done a lot of guidance for us, public safety, Jim from ETS. And I just want to throw a special shout-out to Jim Golden, who's the executive sponsor of this project, because he has just been constantly supportive, really trying to continually balance priorities between caffers and budgets and all that kind of stuff, and he's just been amazing. This is the change management team, a team dedicated to kind of helping people get through this process, kind of teamed ourselves the hand-holders to some extent. And then even before the project ever even started, so this was three years ago, the selection team came together to choose Tyler Munis in the first place, and what ended up being about a year-long process just to choose the software. So with that being said, I also want to thank Harold for all of his support, because every time things started to get a little tough, he would come and help us reprioritize and kind of work through what we needed to work through. And of course, your support financially as well, city council. So that's the update on Phase One, on to Phase Two.
Thank you. That was awesome.
So, so one of the things I did want to say is I wanted to, a lot of great work by all of these folks. I did want to point out Jim and Sandy, because there was a lot of balancing of priorities in this, and it was a constant effort by these folks. And so everyone on the team did a great job. Most of my interaction on this was with Sandy and Jim, and they, again, were doing amazing work in terms of managing all of the issues that come along with a project of this magnitude. When we talked about hundreds, if not thousands, of hours on the DR stuff, same situation here. And so the reason I asked them to pull these forward is everyone was doing all of this work, and they were also doing everything that they needed to do on a daily basis. And so when you take this type of project and you combine it with a natural disaster like we went through, and oh, by the way, let's add to the implementation of a new broadband system, all of those issues really impact the same individuals, whether it be the purchasing department, the finance department. And so much of these folks were balancing multiple roles and trying to get the good work, the great work that they do on a daily basis done at the same time. We are truly seeing an amazing organization come together and implement these projects. I will tell you, I'm in awe of the work that they've been doing. So I just wanted to point that out. A lot of great work, a lot of great folks. And I look for, oh yeah, and budget prioritization, and a comprehensive plan update. Again, I think that's a testament to the organization and the work that they're doing. But more importantly, it's how they come together, and how they work with each other, and how they support each other in the process. So truly amazing things are happening across the organization.
I'd say that comes from leadership from the top down, building, getting rid of silos and getting people to work together and communicate. I mean, you're doing a great job. Thank you. So I guess now it's time for Final Call, Public Invited to Be Heard. Anybody like to come down and speak at Final Call, Public Invited to Be Heard? Okay.
I may be redundant to repeat the same words, but I mean it. I'm a loving person. I love my people. But I mean it. No matter where you come from. That's my God's gift. If you come from Mexico, or you come from where, whatever, I don't care. You're my friend. If you're white or black, I don't care. You're my friend, you're my sister. That's my spirit. I want to live by that. I want to go by that. And I mean it. This is my life. One people, one love. I believe you get the idea. And I will live by that. Until the day I die. Thank you.
Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm, we have this letter at our desk from the Longmont Housing Authority dated March 30th, requesting to additional members, for us to add to additional members. I guess when we did our last votes for boards and commissions, why are we now just receiving So we could have potentially put them on, on our last week when we were voting for boards and commissions. Is there a reason why we get a letter dated March 30th on July 21st requesting to the members?
So I'm not sure who put it on there, but I know that apparently there was a letter sent via email to council.
I just looked at my files and I didn't find it.
Yeah, exactly. And so part of the conversation is Valerie had a discussion with Michael today to discuss this issue, and she will be bringing information back as we move forward. Is that correct, Valerie?
Well, actually, he sent me another copy, so I did not...
Well, actually, he sent me another copy, so I, I did not have, he, he asked what happened with this, and I had not seen it, or I didn't have it in my file. So he sent me this copy. Councilmember Moore asked me to make copies on my two desks, so I think he was going to address that, or at least bring it up here and.
Okay. I'm sure. So we're going to get, see, and when we're talking about, what was it, the Water Board. This is the type of request that I, hopefully we would get from other boards and commissions regarding if they need to add members. So, so Valerie, are we going to get a rough draft of an ordinance, or are we going to?
I need direction from council before I do that.
Well, I'll, I'll wait for Councilmember Moore to, since he's liaison to speak on this, but, but I, I won't make the motion, but I think we should move on to this, since we have a request to get everything ready for our next regular meeting. That's it.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, these, this came up this morning at the meeting that we had this morning, and I, I do believe that what's happened is that this letter fell off our 90-day email inbox limit, and that's why we probably can't find it now. So that's why I asked to get the letter again. So there wasn't ever any action taken on it, so I told him I'd bring it to council tonight so that we could talk about it. And I think what's particularly important here is that they want to add a volunteer board member that's either a resident or a client of LHA, as well as focusing on getting more of a professional accountant, or real estate, or finance person also, another person on there that can help them out with their projects. So that's why I wanted to get this to council tonight, so I don't know if we need any discussion on it, but I think I'd like to make a motion that we have staff bring back whatever is required to make this change, whether it be a resolution or an ordinance, and to reflect their wishes as far as having a resident onboard, as well as a financial, or a professional services person, in order to give them a better handle on what they're doing. As they get bigger, they're, they're already managing a pretty big portfolio, 45 million or something, so they really need a good functioning board, so.
All right, just in moving to second. Any further discussion? Senator Robinson?
Yes, I will be voting in favor of this. However, I just want to make sure that when people are coming on and off the board, that there is some communication as to which type of expertise slot they're trying to fill when, you know, new, they're looking for new board members. I mean, there'll be initially this, but for example, you know, the people that are currently serving have the balance, some balance of expertise. So you'd be looking to, I, I think the other, I guess what I'm getting at is that I'd like to see what the ideal makeup of the board would be. So if, for example, the opening, they may have an opening one year, but they already have two finance and real estate people, are they looking to have somebody who's a client or a volunteer with LHA? So I just, just like we have the Master Board of Appeals.
I think Valerie's ready to answer your question.
Well, actually, I was just going to let council know that I did talk to Michael Reese this afternoon, and he was not exactly sure whether they wanted it specifically designated for those, but that they would, they would hope to get those kind. So I will have a further conversation, bring back better detail with a, with a drafted document.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. Okay, that passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Christensen gone, or absent.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to mention my business of the week. It's a new veterinary, veterinary establishment, Family Pet Hospital at 17th and Pace. They're a full-service veterinary practice, offering diagnostic, preventive, and dental care for your pets. They also have acupuncture, which we, when my dog needed that, I had to go to Boulder. So I'm glad to see that somebody here in town offers acupuncture for their dogs. Go check them out, Family Pet Hospital, 17th and Pace.
Okay, City Manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor. Except my mic's working.
All right. This floor is adjourned.[1593.26]